Here.
Here.
Mrs. Ezekiel is not here. Mrs. Marmian?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Here. Thank you, ma'am. I ask you to rise for pledge of allegiance. Flag is in the back of the room. This week, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I have them. I'm going to pass around. You guys can look at this. This is the commencement program from last night, for those of you that haven't seen it. Get that going.
And?
We'll go to the seat pack presentation. Yeah. None of these people that are giving it are here tonight. All right, we'll skip paragraph 2.01. 2.02 is the school bus emergency drill.
Well, I can explain this. This is, um, I put this on the agenda. Basically for CUSAC, but even though we're non-transporting districts, both Collingswood and Oakland, the children redo, redo transport, take buses that are provided by Cannon County Health Services. So it's required that we have at least two bus drills a year. They usually need to do it in the fall and the spring. And then the board is supposed to basically recognize the fact that bus drills are occurring, so when you undergo CUSAC, the county office is aware.
Okay, we don't have to approve it. We just have to be aware.
That you be aware of it, kind of like your fire drills. It's just another drill.
Question, Collingswood's bus. Does Collingswood, is Collingswood transport any Oakland kids?
No.
No? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, section three, committee of the halls, or motion to go into the committee of the hall?
Semin.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're now in a committee of the whole. Does anybody have anything to bring at this point in time for the committee of the whole?
Just wanted to thank Mrs. Bolden for sharing the newsletters. I've been enjoying getting those last couple additions. So, thank you. Nice. It's been great.
It's special all year, isn't it? No, nothing there. Anyone else have anything? No? Is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Um, I know there's quite a few personnel items under the personnel committee, and I know there were some emails back and forth, but I just thought maybe it would be helpful if we just talk about it, so that particularly if public have any questions, we could review the funding for the assistant principal position again, as well as some of the learning acceleration teachers, which are under the Esser grant, and explain what, how long the funding is for, if and how positions will be funded once the grant expires, that sort of thing. Thanks.
I can take that. The assistant principal position is actually in your preschool expansion aid grant, so it's fully funded, and it's going to be 75% Oakland, 25% to Collingswood, because Collingswood has some classrooms here. I didn't get a chance to do it this month, because we were literally running to get both board agendas done for this week and next week. But probably August, I'll have the shared service agreement on, where Oakland will be sending the shared service to Collingswood, because assistant principal will be shared that way. So that position's fully funded. There's lots of, there are a lot of transfers in personnel. As soon as you move somebody else in the building, and somebody else jumps, and then kind of follow the bouncing ball. That's all under transfers, but the, I guess what sparked it was the teacher moving to be an MTSS support person, and that is in the Esser grant, and that's for until 2024. So, in the coming years, as funds permit, I'm going to start putting some monies in local to build the capacity to have the teacher come back on staff when the grant expires. That is kind of my plan, but yeah, so, Mr. McCarty, sorry, I lost it for a second, he's going to MTSS, so it's like a bouncing ball. Somebody jumps to his spot, and so forth and so on, and then we have, same thing with kindergarten and preschool, kind of follow the bouncing ball. So, I hope that explains everything. But everything's in the budget, everything's funded. Yeah, we don't have to be looking, we're not looking for any money at this point. Everything's accounted for.
What you just went over there, the grant runs until 24?
Yeah, there's Esser, there's Esser, Esser 2. So, as one expires, the other one starts.
That is, that's a 23, 24 school year?
Yes. And it's actually, the funds go till, you have until August of that year to fully spend all your money.
Okay. And what were you saying about when that expires? Liz would go back to?
No. The MTSS teacher would go back into the general fund. Liz stays in the preschool grant.
Okay, so in this preschool grant, but preschool grants want to expire?
No, preschool grant does not expire. Esser expires.
Okay.
So the state expectation around preschool?
So the state made a 10-year commitment to get the state of New Jersey to universal pre-K levels. So what we should see, if they follow through, is a continued increase of investment in preschool, and this new position is funded through some of those additional funds for preschool.
Okay. Do we reapply annually for those, or?
Yes.
Yes, okay, perfect.
Yeah, it usually starts probably around Christmas time. They, they ask us our enrollment for this year, and what we're projecting for next year, and then they fund based, based on our projected enrollment. They either accept, or, I don't know, they never not accept it, but they usually accept your enrollment, and as long as they accept your enrollment projections, and you're within whatever boundaries that they're setting for you, then that's what's funded in your budget in the upcoming year.
Within our region, we're around 50% of the ecosystem, so we have lots of room for growth.
Okay, what, now, the salary's not under $1,000. What, what is she making right now? What kind of an increase is that? Ball, ballpark. I'm sorry? $3,000? $2,000? Okay. Okay, Denise, anything else you got?
So, just want to clarify, you had said that we're trying to build capacity for post 2024, right? Because the goal would be, I mean, it's hard to look that far ahead, plus we will have, I then needed to have negotiated a new send-receive agreement with Collingswood as well. But I'm, I think we were just, you know, I, I remember talking with Denise offline about just building the capacity of the budget for things that we're not sure we would have, like Esser may not exist in 2025?
Correct. And the good thing with Oakland is you guys have banked cap, and like, I always say this, I don't say you should take it all, but you guys have like $300,000 in banked cap, that you could literally ask the taxpayers for next year, and it would be completely, it would be approved by the county, because you've built that capacity, and it expires, like a third of it expires every year. I wouldn't say go and do that, but you do have the ability to incrementally ask the taxpayers for a little bit more each year to build your capacity, to keep some of these positions that we are funding through Esser, that, you know, let's say they're very successful, and you want to keep them post-Esser. We're trying to build that capacity, so you guys have, you can make the choice in a couple years.
That's a very nice way to say that. We're building capacity. Still dollars out of our pocket, guys. This is a bad night for a meeting. I just got my estimated tax bill yesterday. Oh, it's on its way. Okay, what else you got, Denise? Anything? Okay. All righty. Is there a motion come out of the executive, or, I'm sorry, the committee of the hall?
So moved.
All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, we're back on the schedule. Future dates, this is a really good one. There are only two. And one of, one of them is the board meeting in August. So there's not much there for you. Okay, we go to section five, approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Semin.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Moving second. Any questions or corrections on the minutes? Hearing none on a roll call.
Voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm out of practice. I wasn't here last month.
This is one month, and you're like?
It doesn't take much, I'll tell you. I, I'm abstaining because I wasn't here last month, so. Okay, there's no unfinished business at this point. This is our first public comment section. If anybody has anything to bring to the board at this point in time, on agenda items, please rise, give your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes. Nothing. Okay, we'll move right along to the superintendent's report.
Section 7.01 is the enrollment report that is attached. May of 2021, the enrollment was 271. 2022 is 267. 7.02, the safety drill report is also attached. No suspensions. 7.04 is the June PIB report, which is also attached, and 7.05 is the child study team report for May of 2022.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McDowell. The business administrator report, secretary's report. Bethan, you're back.
All right. So presented tonight are your May 2022 monthly transfers, your May 2022 secretary, treasurer, and cash reports, your listing of your June purchase orders, and there may be a final, and I'll send it usually at the end of June, beginning of July, as we're trying to clean up the school year. There may be a final purchase order list and a final bill list. If I do that, which I most likely will to clean up the books, I'll send everybody an email over the summer, like I've done in the past. But listed tonight is what we have in through the beginning of June, and then a listing of the June warrants that will be sent tomorrow morning.
Yeah, very good. Thanks, Bethan. Paragraph nine, finance, buildings, and grounds. Todd Schaefer.
All right. Items 9.01 through 9.06 were presented by Ms. Coleman for approval. Item 9.07 is to approve a contract with Virtual Health to provide occupational and employee health services on an as-needed basis. Item 9.08 is, we're looking for approval to place students in the appropriate schools for the 2022, 2023 extended and regular school year as presented there for you. Item 9.09, we are looking for approval of the Burlington County Insurance Pool Joint Insurance Fund return of surplus. Item 9.10, as required, we're looking for approval for the school district contract report by the school business administrator, which is presented to the board. Item 9.11, looking for approval of our capital and maintenance reserve deposits, where it's been determined that up to $200,000 may be available for maintenance reserve, and up to $300,000 available for capital reserve. Item 9.12, looking for approval to approve the inter-local services agreement with the Oakland Borough to maintain the grounds for the Oakland Board of Education for the 2022, 2023 school year, in the amount of $13,000, which has remained consistent for many years. Item 9.13 is looking for approval that the State Department has notified the Oakland School District of its eligibility for funding as part of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. Item 9.14, we are looking, excuse me, for approval of the following staff to be paid out of the elementary and secondary education grant for the 2022, 2023 school year. You can see the two employees listed, Lori Fleming and Sandra McDevitt. Item 9.15, we're looking to approve an accepted donation of $250 from the Oakland Education Foundation to the Oakland School Library for the purchase of books. And item 9.16, looking to approve a use of facilities request for the OC Panthers travel basketball from September 12th through November 1st, between 5:00 and 9:00 p.m. in the evening. Item 9.17, another facilities request. This is for Oakland Soccer Club for their fall 2022 season, July through November of 2022 as well. Practices on weekdays, I'm sorry, weekday evenings in July through November. They will submit their practice schedule. Games are on Saturdays and Sundays from September through November. And that's it. We're looking for approval on items 9.01 through 9.17.
Okay, is there a motion for that?
Semin.
Second.
Okay, moving second. Any questions on any of those items?
Just a question on the travel basketball. If there are PTA events that have not been scheduled yet, do PTA still get priorities?
Yeah, and they'll work around. They just wanted to make sure. They actually sent, both groups sent me their paperwork in May. I put them off till June, because we're trying to stick to the seasonal calendar, but I know basketball, I know they're not starting until late September, but they wanted to get, I guess, their fielders' after families in the summer, so I did put it on for now. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question, and I talked about that, and I understand that we're authorizing adding up to $200,000 for maintenance and $300,000 for capital reserve, if we have the money left over at the end of the year. I, I'm a little concerned about putting $300, putting up to $300,000 in the capital reserve. I'd rather put more in the maintenance reserve, which I think we're more likely to use.
No, I agree, and I don't think we're going to have $500,000 left at the end of the year. That's why we do an up to amount. So what we'll do is we'll just, we can just put it all in maintenance. But I just stick consistent with what, you're allowed to put it in both. In June, this is the only month of the year before you close your books. If you've acknowledged that you have surplus before the auditor comes in, the only time I can deposit into these reserve accounts is in June or at budget time. So that's why I do an up to amount. So if we're looking at it, and we only have $200,000 of excess surplus, I'll just throw all in maintenance and do zero capital. But I give the auditor some leeway. That's why I do it that way.
Suppose we have $400,000?
$400,000, I'll do the 200 maintenance and probably put $200,000 in the budget towards some sort of project. There's always something we have to do, so.
Can we get it out of capital reserve? We can get it out of capital reserve?
Yes, you can at budget time. So if we're looking at a project, or something comes up at budget time, you can do a withdrawal for capital.
Something, there's a project.
Yeah, yeah.
There'll be something.
Or maintenance, like, you know.
There'll be something. There's got to be another thing that we need.
Right. But that's why I do up to an amount. I don't, I don't want to lock you in.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions? On a roll call.
Mrs. Papel?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes. Okay, section 10, curriculum and personnel. Mrs. Riley is not here. Curriculum, yeah, can you, can you do that, Bethan?
Yeah, I'll just go through it real quick. So there's no field trips. 10.02, we're transferring Liz Soloway. Congratulations, Liz. She's transferring from the ESL teacher, and she will be the assistant principal in Oakland. 10.03 is the listing of transfers I mentioned earlier during the committee of the whole. It's a little domino effect happening in the district, but it's all good things. So it's a listing of teachers and where they're transferring within the building. 10.04 is asking approval for Catherine Tomazuski to be the second grade teacher. 10.05, to approve Maria Southard, Southard, to be the preschool floater teacher. 10.06 is approving Mary Hopkins to do some summer hours, to do preschool and kindergarten registration paperwork before the kids start in September. And 10.07 is a listing of your PLC teacher leaders by grade. 10.08 is a listing of your staff that is working your extended school year summer program. 10.09 is your summer child study team and related services, staff approval rates for them to do their summer work. 10.10 is a listing for summer IEP meetings, to approve special ed and general ed teachers to come in and work on their hourly rate to work on IEPs as needed. 10.11 is approving those two teachers to work on curriculum development during the summer. 10.12 is approving Liz Soloway, and again, this may change now, because of Liz's new job, but you have it in the OEA contract, that you have no child left behind, which is now ESEA, but a coordinator, somebody who does the grants on your behalf. Currently, that's Liz. 10.13 is a listing of your Oakland Esser grant staff. 10.14 is a listing of substitutes and tutors to be approved for the next school year. 10.15 is a travel expense report. 10.16 is just authorizing Dr. McDowell to continue to offer employment contracts as needed to successful candidates, with notification to take place at the next public meeting of the board to be held on August 16th. And that's it. So approval for, lost my place, 10.01 through 10.16.
Is there a motion for that? So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Hearing none, no?
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have a question. For 10.16, can you, are you able to let us know what are the open positions now? Sorry, there's so many transfers, so I was just curious what.
And ESL?
Yeah.
Just one quick comment before the vote. I just wanted to highlight, we're very fortunate in Oakland to have such a talented staff. So I, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't glaze over and did not acknowledge, we are transferring a teacher who has been a teacher in the, in our school for 16 years, who has put in the time, put in the effort, went back to school, got the training, got the certification. So we're growing our own, and this is part of more that's, that's to come. We will be establishing some pipeline development programs, starting in September, because we, what we acknowledge, both as two districts, we acknowledge that the education profession is under attack, and that if we're not investing in our educators who are skillful and talented, they will leave us. So I just wanted to acknowledge that we're extremely happy with Liz taking on this new role, and that we're going to be developing additional opportunities to be able to continue to grow our own. Not just teacher to administrator, but also instructional assistant to teacher, teacher to teacher leader, coach, and whatnot.
I just wanted to thank you for saying that. My kids absolutely adore her, so I think they're going to be sad to find out she's no longer in the classroom, but very happy she's still in the building.
Oh, she'll be in the classroom. She'll just be in a different capacity.
Right, right, right.
I just have one more question. About, have, have decisions been made about the gifted and talented program management? But the plan is to continue it. Awesome. Thanks.
Okay, anything else? On a roll call, please.
Mrs. Papel?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes. Okay, Denise, school, community relations, and policy committee.
All right, so the PTA was really busy the final month of school. So in addition to helping out with the field day event, which went great, it was pushed back a week, but the weather on the day that we did have it was absolutely perfect. We also hosted Donuts with Dads event, and there were a number of activities for the fifth graders that are promoting to middle school. There was a skate party, there was a pool party with the Collingswood Elementary students that are promoting as well. There is also a bowling party that we had no parts of, but that was hosted by the, the dare team from the Oakland Police Department, and that was just a wonderful surprise. So, lots of fun things that happened there. They also, in the final weeks of school, hosted a penny moors between the classrooms to raise funds, which was a lot of fun as well, and the winning classrooms received a cocktail party. So, good stuff happening. So, oh, and also there was the townwide yard sale in June, which was very popular once again. There were new officers that were appointed at the June meeting, so they'll be taking over, of course, next year. So Jess Rutterow is the new president, Lila Andrewar is the new vice president, Alicia Richmond is the new treasurer, our pre-K teacher, Tori Ashudo, is the recording secretary, and then Jamie Cushman is the membership secretary. And then Jen Yoder, who is one of our school nurses here, is continuing on as the vice president as well. And so, they will be meeting over the summer, and of course, there'll be more activities happening in September. So that's it for the PTA report. I'll toss it to Therese for OMESEC.
So OMESEC has not had a formal meeting since our last meeting, but they have a scheduled meeting from Monday night, the 27th, at 7:30. Mostly just finishing up budget requirements, like the dare program, as Denise mentioned, did all of its final programming, and purchased the, the wonderful swag for the fifth graders, and they had that great bowling party, which I heard lots of great things about. The OMESEC scholarship, which you could see in the program that's been distributed by Bill, went to Noel Cusad, if I'm saying that correctly? Cusit? Cusat? There we go. Third time's a charm. Sorry, Noel, congratulations. So, yeah, we'll, we'll just be planning on Monday for looking ahead to next year, and there's talk about bringing back the color run as a fundraiser in the fall alongside the town picnic. So more on that soon.
Before I pass it to Bill, I just wanted to mention, too, that I forgot to mention the PTA scholarships that were also passed out to seniors. They want to, it was the Mary A. Finney Scholarship, went to Anashir, and Noel Cusad. Thank you. All right, Bill, Collingswood update.
Yes, ma'am. This, you know, I was looking at these, this, the Collingswood meeting was May 23rd. A lot of this stuff is history at this point in time, but I have it written down, so you're going to have to listen. You can ignore it, you choose to. They had a teacher and staff recognition ceremony. The high school, the teacher, Jeffrey Herman, that's the guy that, okay, great. Jeffrey Herman was also Jason, Kelsey, thank you, on, at the graduation last night, and he put on a terrific performance. He really did. So it's good that he won. Donna Willis was the support staff winner of middle school. Suzette Walsh was the teacher, and Tracy Charlesworth was the instructional assistant. They appointed professional service providers. The bid threshold they mentioned is $44,000, which is the same it is for, for Oakland. They appointed a number of staff. They approved the special ed programs and the Twilight Program, which is the 18 to 21-year-old program. They had the, there were no bowling reports, which is a good sign. Last board meeting for the Oakland, oh, last board meeting for the Oakland student reps, which was Anashir this year. She had her last meeting at that point in time. They approved the facility use for the book festival and for the fireworks, so you'll see both of those at the, well, you may not see the book festival unless it's raining, but the fireworks, you will see at the, at the school. They approved a number of field trips, including an overnight trip for the band. Collingswood Band does tremendous work. I'll tell you, they're always winning something. They approved many personnel changes. First reading of policy 5511, which was a dress code, and there was no public participation, which is probably a first for Collingswood at that point in time. And that was it. Questions? Complaints? Incidentally, Collingswood's next meeting is Monday night, so on the 16th. You'll find out what goes on Monday night.
I'm going to pass 11.04 to Jimmy for the Oakland Education Foundation update.
Okay, so you guys all had a lot to talk about, and they have not met, to my understanding. I saw that the $250 donation got put into the library, which we were not supposed to mention last month, but we knew about it, because it was a surprise. mention last month, but we knew about it, because it was a surprise. And yeah, that's, I'll keep my ears open for the next meeting, and that's, that's all I have.
Perfect. There are no policy readings at this time, so that's it for community relations. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Denise. I'll be there to give you some approval. So we come to the second public participation section. Same ground rules as the first. Stand, give us your name and address. Keep your remarks to five minutes, and you can talk about anything you want, within reason. No one? Okay. So far, so good. In that case, we're going to go into executive session to discuss a contract negotiation, and there will be no official action taken tonight. It will only be a discussion, so you're more than welcome to stay if you'd like to, but if-
If I can.
Well, no, I mean, not stay here, stay in the, in the school, outside of the room. But there won't be any motion or anything that will happen after this, and we'll come back into public session to adjourn. So if you want to stay, that's fine. Take a chair with you, and you can sit in the hall for hopefully a brief period of time. Otherwise, thanks for coming, and we'll see you in August. Okay, is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss a contract negotiation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are now in executive session.